Jennifer, we have these nights we don't have to worry about.
Thank you.
I now call the Des Moines City Council's study session to order for September 8th. And with that, I'm going to have Councilmember Steinmetz read us the pledge or lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Let the record reflect that all seven members of the council are present. And I understand for the city clerk, there's no correspondence.
No mayor.
All right. All right. So comments from the public must be limited to the items of business, which is our budget for this particular meeting, according to Council Rule 10. I just want to remind those participants that any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing council will be removed from the meeting. And you will have three minutes to speak, and I'll call you in order, starting with Mr. David Emery.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's David Emery. I'm a citizen of Des Moines. Thank you for the opportunity to present a few budget recommendations for your consideration. Several of us concerned citizens have organized to revitalize the Redondo Community Club, an organization that for many decades served to advocate for the Redondo Beach community. This group has come together to make a few budget requests today. I will be presenting two of them, and then a colleague will be presenting others. Our first budget request reads as follows. Whereas the Redondo Boat Launch parking lot is a major location where street racers congregate, whereas the congregated street racers use this parking lot as a base for racing around the surrounding neighborhoods, repeatedly leaving and then returning to the parking lot, and whereas most visitors parking this lot fail to pay for their parking, and whereas the Des Moines Marina experienced a reported 75% drop in annoyance calls to the police, once electronic parking gates were added to the Marina parking lots, therefore the Redondo Community Club requests the city council include funding in the 2023 budget to install electronic parking gates to the Redondo Boat Launch parking lot. This request includes funding specifically for community engagement regarding the specific plans for this request. Our second budget request reads as follows. Whereas the streets surrounding the Redondo Boat Launch parking lot are a major location where street racers congregate, whereas these street racers are also frequently, these streets are also frequently used for illegal activities such as the sale and use of illegal drugs, consumption of alcohol by visitors who subsequently go on to drive around the neighborhoods, prostitution and gun violence, and whereas law enforcement resources are limited, and whereas institution of a parking fee would serve as a deterrent to the use of these parking spaces for illegal purposes, therefore the Redondo Community Club requests that the city council include funding in the 2023 budget to institute metered paid street parking for the streets currently available for public parking surrounding the Redondo Boat Launch parking lot, including again funds specifically for community engagement regarding the specific plans. Thank you for your consideration of our requests.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. The next person to be speak is Ms. Karen Shatman. Did I say that correctly?
Lois Shartman.
Shartman, okay.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Karen Shartman. I have been a resident of Des Moines in the Redondo neighborhood for three years. I'm a finance professional by background. I retired this year after 34 years in the healthcare industry, most recently serving as the Chief Financial Officer for Kaiser Permanente in Washington. I'm here today because I care deeply about this community that I've grown to love, and maybe I miss budget meetings in the fall, but thank you for entertaining us today. So two additional requests on behalf of the Redondo Community Club. The third request also is aimed at addressing the scourge of street racing that we've seen grow over the years. Redondo, as you know, is a hotspot for this activity. We believe that it is a discreet number of individuals that are engaging in this illegal activity, which is making our streets very unsafe and leading to lots of other crime in the area. We would like to ask for funding to, on the quickest timeline possible, install speed cameras that would be tied to heavy penalties for the excessive speeds that these racers behave in. In Redondo, we believe this will be a very effective deterrent toward the speed racing, and that we put this in place on the soonest possible path, whether it's through a pilot or other avenues that may be available. The fourth and final request, and I should add, for all of our requests, we are adding a request for funding for community engagement. We, the Redondo Community Club, are happy to serve in helping to connect the community. We know that the city, you have a lot on your agenda, that having funding to support engagement will help us get to the right solution, so every one of our requests is adding that component. Our final request is addressing a broader issue that impacts many people on a daily basis, the safety of this wonderful resource we have, which is the Redondo Beach and the boardwalk that goes with it. I walk it every day myself, once or twice a day. It's used by many people in the community, much more broadly than Redondo. Everybody who accesses the beach has one thing in common, perhaps except for our neighbor who walks down from Woodmont, but they get to the boardwalk by crossing Beach Drive or 281st. And the speeds on Beach Drive are inconsistent with the pedestrian use there. I observe families, it's great to see families there with kids, often with pets, they're there for relaxation, and I observe they're not paying attention often when they're crossing the street, and cars have excessive speeds. So our specific request is to conduct a traffic safety study to identify the risks, to come up with the right solutions, and we believe that there will be a cost. We ask for funding to go into the budget for traffic calming solutions that may result from a traffic study here in this wonderful and heavily utilized resource. Before I conclude, I want to recap four benefits of these proposals. They will address safely, state, safety broadly in our community, they will ensure that our police force can work to their highest scope of practice, they will provide revenue sources to offset some of the cost, and they will support community engagement, which we believe is an important solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shartman. Moving on to Mr., is this Greg Ford?
That is.
Okay, thank you. You all have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be mayor in the city council. My name is Greg Ford, and I'm a resident of the Soundview Drive. I've lived for about three years after retiring from the United States Army. My last job in the Army was a garrison commander in a base in California, and so in the position I was similar to a city manager, and I faced many of the similar challenges you have here. And I know you have tough decisions with funding, but the areas I ask you to focus on, and one which I could never accept risk one, is life, health, and safety, or what you can think of as public safety. Public safety and its various requirements is what keeps people interested and invested in their community. As such, it is critical, which is why I concur with the funding of community engagement. My entire life, people have been around, support what they help create, and you have citizens here who want to work with you to create a safe future and ensure expended funds are used to the greatest benefit. The other thing that funding community engagement provides is getting a perspective from the ground, person on the ground. That's on the Army that we defer to. The individual is actually in the fight and set the conditions firsthand. They may not have the complete view, but they have the best view of the situation they are in, so there's great deference given to that person. Community engagement will provide you that perspective. During the Army's housing crisis, I held monthly town halls and visited every resident who had significant issues. They provided with invaluable understanding of their true challenges, not the wave top level issues, as I heard from those experiencing the crisis firsthand. Funding public safety that can be achieved through means, not requiring the use of our precious law enforcement officers, is smart for a variety of reasons. However, the greatest I can think of is that it frees our officers up about, from worrying about violations, and instead focusing on misdemeanors and felonies. I don't know about this council, but I firmly believe in Wilson's theory of broken windows, and that found that early intervention can disrupt potential future negative behavior. Funding the effort to get the speed cameras or provide automated gates frees up the precious police officer and raises the difficulty for illegal behavior. Finally, in my position, I worked with city councils, the majority of my base was not behind fences, and shared concurrent jurisdiction with two of those cities. After 10 mini-city council budget meetings, I am seeing similarities between what you faced and what they faced, so I'll leave you with this. The best city council I ever saw engaged their citizens for their funding requirements. Their meetings were filled with public comment on how to use the precious funding, but they also found that those same citizens would work to ensure that funding, once invested, was maximized to ensure it's the greatest return on investment. So engaging the community helped ensure the funding achieved the desired objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Last person to speak tonight, I have Ms. Sharon Morehouse.
Hi, my name is Sharon Morehouse, and I live in Woodmont, which is pretty much directly in between Des Moines and Redondo, so I have great interests in both of those areas. I have a boat at the Marina, I'm down there a lot. I walk to Redondo nearly every day, time and tide presenting me the opportunity or not. So I want to piggyback or follow along with the requests of my neighbors here, is that that really is very much in, we need more, something to do with that traffic down there. It's my, one of my neighbors It's my, one of my neighbors was just almost running over backwards in her driveway yesterday, watering her flowers by somebody zooming down, going up the wrong way, and then seeing somebody else coming down the right way and backing into her driveway, and she was watering her flowers just south of Salty's. So, that really needs to happen. I see people fishing on the no-fishing dock every day. I smell marijuana every day. I pick up beer bottles and all kinds of syringes and all the way, every day. So, we got issues down there, and I hope we can work on that. And the other issue is, we have had another wreck on Woodmont's Dead Man's Curve, where somebody flew into one of our board members' driveway and smashed his pickup truck two nights ago, where I am personally asking for another look at that Dead Man's Curve, and I have been twice denied a sign for a left-hand turn, which is where I go every day, trying to just get home. Can we just, I would like some more money for signage. That's my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morehouse. All right. All right, before we begin the presentation from our city manager and staff, I just want to remind you that tonight is informational, and I'm going to ask council to hold any questions till the end of the presentation, and with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate you're here. This-
I'm just, you go ahead, but I'm just telling you that that practice of holding all questions until the end of the presentation, I could not object to it more.
Objection noted. Thank you. Please continue.
I didn't expect it that. This is an annual event. It's a budget retreat where we present to council, our staff puts together a summary of issues that will be part of a presentation to the council in October on the budget, and I'll go into that more, but the first thing I get to do tonight is something that's always a pleasure, and that is to introduce a new employee to everyone, and this will be an employee who not only the council will have a lot of interaction with, no doubt, but the public will have a great deal of interaction with. And so, I'm going to put Malika on the spot and ask her to stand up. This is, this is- And this is Malika Johnson, City Hall Front Desk Assistant, and we were always so impressed with her kindness and friendliness at Wesley that we stole her. So, with that, she's going to work with Tara and Bonnie, Laura, and Sarah Lee, and so we're really pleased to have you, Malika, and we're really, I think the positive energy you bring is going to, you know, kind of ripple through our community, so we really appreciate you being here. And as I said earlier, you don't need to stay. I don't know how you couldn't be drawn to, but you and Laura certainly can go if you like. So, the process is that, under state law, in early October, city manager is required to present to the council a recommended budget for 2023, and this is a start of that process. Tonight, what we'll be doing is presenting to you the dynamics that we face as a city, and what that essentially is, is each department with their challenges, efforts, successes have been, and what they're facing going forward, and each one, although it's different, the sum of those presentations is the work of this city as a whole. So, it's important, we appreciate the opportunity to kind of update the council on what we're doing. The calendar we'll talk about under Next Steps and Finance, that will be one of the last slides, that will kind of outline what the process is moving forward on the budget. And I want to talk about a couple of things. There were some different requests over time for information on certain subjects, so we will have a code enforcement update under the Police Department presentation, and I think the emphasis on that, and as you'll see, is that code enforcement is an interdepartmental effort. Although Cory, who's excellent code enforcement officer, resides in PD, there are other departments that work closely with them to assure that our code enforcement is taking place effectively. And also, during COVID, and we'll talk more about that, there have been a lot of really innovative efforts taken, and none greater than our municipal court. So, we'll have the judge, Judge Leone, who's here, present some of the challenges they faced and the ways that they've addressed them, and remain functional in their COVID. I want to talk about the economic dynamic that we're facing in the budget preparation. That'll be next slide. Great, thank you. So, the city is an economic agent that works within a larger picture, and that larger picture is essentially the macroeconomy of this country and of the nation and also the world. And so, there are a number of factors right now that are affecting our budget, cost of finance, and the dynamic of how we proceed in business. So, first of all, the good news is that there's been a significant recovery from COVID, but not to say that there haven't been variants, and recently, we had probably more contagion, transmission of COVID in the city than at any time in the past two and a half years. The difference is that the impacts of that were less than they had been relative to hospitalizations and fatalities, but it's still alive, it's still out there, we still follow protocols, we still have quarantines, we still have, you know, daily checking of testing, depending, encouraging people to become vaccinated. So, COVID is sort of mysteriously disappearing, but it's still highly evident, and that affects how we do business and who can participate in activities that involve the public and other staff. Another thing that's going on in the United States and elsewhere is extreme pressures on the labor market in terms of availability of labor, and I have yet to see something written that clearly explains what's going on, but essentially what's going on is that people got used to working with Zoom, and a lot of people like that freedom and flexibility and are not interested in full-time jobs anymore. So, that's one piece of it. The other is that, because of efforts taken by the federal government, demand factors for all aspects of economic activity, be it commercial, retail, financial, are relatively strong, which require labor, which help, you know, place pressure on the availability of labor on the demand side and on the supply side. So, we've had problems finding employees, is the simplest way to say that. Finally, inflation has grown extremely high, very quickly, in our country, and so, what I'm basically, the point of that is that we have labor agreements that are tied to the Consumer Price Index, depending on the agreement and depending on how they're structured, and those affect not only that bargaining group, but all people within the city. The current CPI and COLA that we're looking at to accommodate in some manner in the proposed budget, the council will see in October, is around 9%. And that is complicated because in order to retain employees and attract employees, we have to be competitive at least, and also, the value of people's wages decrease as inflation goes up, so if you don't keep them pace with the inflationary rate, essentially, you're in a situation where you're paying people less money for the same work, and as a city, that's something that, as I recommend to the council, I will not support that. I will support COLAs that are commensurate with the financial picture in the country. So, finally, looking at financial and organizational factors, how do we address this? So, you will hear from each department ways that we are trying to address this, but one way that we do that, the primary fund in the city is called the general fund, and that's what we want to keep balanced and solvent, and we've had success doing that the last six years. The, one of the tools that we can use is to use other funds, Development Fund 105, 114 is the American Rescue Plan Act resources, and to try to distribute as much as we legally can to these other funds so that we can try and protect the general fund as much as possible. So, we've done allocations across funds. The challenges for the city, they're ongoing, we've talked about this before, every year I think we bring it up, but one of the challenges for the city is attrition and succession planning. And by attrition, what happens is essentially, in our city and in other cities, there are two different groups of employees. The first group has been here for a long time, and at some point, they're going to leave. So, we have retirements, and those happen fairly often in the city. We had a situation in the Building Department where we had three building officials leave that represented over 130 years of institutional knowledge, and we put in place a plan that's working really well, and our new building official, Dan Hop, and the other building officials have done a great job of trying to pick up the slack, but that's a huge amount of experience to lose that needs to be replaced and lends itself to the success of our efforts. The other thing is that when those people walk out the door, they take with them the institutional knowledge. So, the other part of the picture of employment is younger people that are coming into the city, taking jobs, learning processes, but we need to, that's where we're having difficulty attracting and retaining employees, and COVID put undue stresses on employees, so we've had people leave because they're just done. They are chronically overworked by the demands of running the city in the context of COVID, where other employees are unavailable. So, those have been some of the challenges we faced. What you will see in this budget presentation is a focus on two ways to try and address that. The first is increasing technological efficiency so that we can maximize the way that we do business in the city, either directly or technologically, and the second is to emphasize training to fill in the gap around the loss of institutional knowledge. So, those are our strategies in the budget that you will see, and especially in October, when we put numbers to those efforts, that increasing our technological capacity and emphasizing training across all departments, and you'll hear more about that as the departments give their presentations, those are the strategies that we intend to employ. Next, please. I want to let everyone know also that we will, we're not going to talk about ARPA tonight. That was $9.1 million that came to the city from the federal government, which we've utilized portions of, council approved the allocation of those funds, both recommended allocations from the C administration and also their own allocations. They need to be allocated by the end of 2024, they have to be spent by 2026, and we will bring those, the ARPA fund update, back to council in 2023 and have a discussion about the possibility of where we are using the funds, and there may be certain of those funds that could be reallocated into different areas, but we want to have that discussion with council. It would require council action for those funds to be redirected, so we don't do that ourselves. So, now we'll start working on the sort of department dynamic. That's city manager's office, what it consists of, you can see in the left-hand side. Bonnie is our chief administrative officer, Tara is the city clerk, we have Sarah Lee working on public records, Laura helping us, and now Malika. The executive team for the C manager is the city attorney, the executive director of Marina Redevelopment, who Dan has been appointed to that position to help us with Marina redevelopment, we have the police chief, finance director, deputy finance director, Bonnie, our public works director, community development director, and HR, AJ, who does a phenomenally excellent job, is involved in all of this, so she's literally a sort of de facto member of the executive team. Next. So, now what I'm going to do is introduce Shannon. Shannon's going to talk about emergency management and workplace safety, and I just also want to acknowledge that when Shannon's complete with her presentation, she's going to leave because she has the CERT team tonight. So, with that, Shannon, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. My name is Shannon Kirchberg. I'm the Director of Emergency Management and Workplace Safety. So, I'm going to take you on a journey here. So, we started off in February of 2020 to present day responding to COVID. In the very beginning, under the partnership with South King Fire and Rescue and the dynamic leadership of Mr. Dan Brewer, we were able to execute and open our Emergency Operations Center up at Fire Station 67 on 223rd Street. A little bit different than other small cities' EOCs, ours is not in a box, it stays set up 24 by 7 at the fire station, so we can literally walk in at any moment, turn on the lights, turn on the computers, and be ready to go. There's no unpacking, there's no quarterly updates to the computers, everything is there, set, ready to go. And we did implement this based on COVID response because we realized very quickly that we needed someplace where we could circle and partner with our emergency responders to respond to this virus. Part of COVID, we implemented many safety procedures for staff, and nobody scoffed, but I put health checks in all buildings to help with contact tracing so that if we did have an employee that came down with COVID, we would know where people were, what buildings they were in, and I could easily reach out and identify employees that could have had close contact or a possible exposure with COVID. We implemented a COVID notification process. The Department of Labor and Industries requires that we reach out to each impacted employee within 24 hours of the city being notified of a COVID-positive employee. So, the health checks, contact tracing, and notification letters were all implemented to ensure that we hit those windows, and I have to say, we exceeded the 24 hours almost every single time. We also put together a very extensive Safe Start reopening plan, which was last summer, we put on pause, dusted off, and re-implemented this spring, and that was put together by a representative from every single department, got into all of the nuances for everybody, and got it all in writing so that everybody knew what every department was doing and when people were reporting. We maintained vigilance in updating directors and staff on the virus, which included daily number updates, public health updates to all department heads, vaccination information, testing site information, the never-ending circle of COVID information. We made sure that our staff and directors had the most up-to-date information at all times. We applied for two FEMA public assistant grant reimbursements for our COVID expenses. Our first, our first grant that we applied for was February, covered February 2020 through September 15th of 2020. That reimbursement was received for a total of $64,315. Our second grant application was submitted for September of 2020, which was September 16th, through March of this year, and that was for just shy of $91,000, and I'm happy to say that we were approved by FEMA. I received the contract from the state, we should have payment of that $91,000 within 10 business days. Next slide. We completed our comprehensive emergency management plan that was approved by Washington State back in April. I brought it here to council and did a full presentation on the plan on June 9th of 2022. Copies were distributed to almost all departments, still working on getting those out. We participated in two exercises last year, the Cascadia Rising Tabletop, which was on June 13th and 15th. We brought department heads up to the EOC and participated with the state in a virtual tabletop. We primarily listened and strategized at the table within our departments here at the city, and then also, the great Washington- And then also the Great Washington Shakeout, which is always the third Thursday of October, which this year will be October 20th at 10:20. We will practice our drop, cover, hold on for one minute. And then adding this year, we will do a full evacuation of all city facilities, practicing our department evacuation process, our reunification locations to ensure that all employees know what to do in case of an emergency and the need to evacuate. In 2023, emergency management goals. We will start working with all the different department heads on their EOC positions and implement their training process to make sure that they know what their position is responsible for. And so that we are ready to respond to a spontaneous emergency. COVID has been an ongoing emergency, but we need to be ready for something that was unexpected, spontaneous and over a short period of time instead of two and a half years. We need to ensure the readiness to respond for all of our department heads. And that's going to include some hours of FEMA training inside and outside of city. I hope to accomplish two CERT classes in 2023, March, and then a second one in October. Currently, we're partnering with the city of Tuckwell, Normandy Park and Buren. And we have a total of, I believe, 40 people taking CERTs starting tonight. And then we'll look at doing another one in March. Looking at additional community outreach, we have completed a CPR class. We also completed a Stop the Bleed class. And then I hope to start up individual preparedness, prepare in a year classes starting in January. 2022 for workplace safety. Defensive driving program has been something that we have outsourced and sent our employees to take defensive driving outside of the city at other cities. We've decided to bring that internally. And we have developed a defensive driving program that we will start implementing this, this year and through 2023. We're going to update our evacuation plans for all facilities and practice them. And then this evacuation will be an annual event. We are required by the Department of Labor and Industries to practice for earthquake as well as evacuations every single year. In 2023, workplace safety goals will be the Accident Prevention Plan. We plan to update it and have it approved by the state by the end of 2023. We're going to try and change our incident and accident reporting to a digital format to get rid of the paper trail to ensure that these incident reports go to the proper department at the proper time and they are responded to timely and effectively. And everybody that needs to know of the incident knows about it. And then our goal is to have me get CPR trainer certified so that instead of sending our employees out to be trained by an external entity, we can have it internally and it won't cost us for employees to go outside to get their CPR certifications as a new hire or their recertification that is required every two years. I want to emphasize that we are in the recovery phase of emergency management operations from COVID. That does not mean that we won't roll back to response. The new vaccine will be out shortly. Anybody that has received a booster or finished their vaccine within two months is eligible for the new updated booster shot.
Thank you, Shannon. I want to make two comments. First of all, Shannon started this position, which was new for her, what, 2018?
2019.
2019. So the first thing that happened was COVID. So introduction, introduction to fire. And the other thing that's really, I think, striking about the, and you'll see rolling through this budget. And we were blessed as a city in order to do this. But we, through COVID, we tended to retain the maximum amount of staff we were able, anticipating that at some point there would be a recovery and that staff could be re-employed doing city business and activities, programs, rec department, all of that. But we were able to do that because of the strong fund balance that we've established over the last number of years. So, but I think you can see the level of, of skill and knowledge and commitment that Shannon has brought to this and we really appreciate it. We could not have made it through COVID without you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So let's move on to the city clerk and our chief administrative officer.
Evening, Council. Bonnie Wilkins is Chief Administrative Officer. The city clerk's office is a central department of five mighty employees. City Clerk Tara Keen, we have Public Records Analyst Sarah Lee, City Hall Office Specialist Laura Hop, who was over by our new City Hall front desk assistant, Malika Johnson, just a little bit ago. And with that, Owen, myself. And with that, now I'm going to turn it over to your city clerk to give her presentation.
Good evening, Council. Tara Keen, City Clerk. As a central department of the city, the city clerk's office was instrumental in facilitating, facilitating employees to work, to work remotely. This included setting up numerous Zoom meetings daily, oftentimes having to change meetings, meeting days and times to coordinate with other agencies and staff schedule. This implementation, or sorry, we implemented electronic agenda packets to review and approve. This allowed us to continue to be able to prepare packets while staff was working remotely. We started routing the contracts and agreements for electronic approval as well. This all put a heavy workload on the staff in the city clerk's office. This led us to, this led us to an immediate path for electronic records management. Because we are handling all the agendas, contracts, agreements electronically, we could index these immediately for signature, eliminating paper. We continue to look for more efficient ways to scan and index paper records that are still on site. We continue utilizing technology as we also are able to hold civil service oral boards virtually. Staff has, or sorry, staff has been able to attend more trainings and less time away from the office and less cost to the department for travel and lodging. What does this mean for the future of the department? With succession planning, I'm now the city clerk and plan on training the public records analyst and the city clerk, or sorry, city office specialist to backfill a number of the deputy city clerk duties. We will continue to work towards the CMC certifications and I will work towards my MMC certification. We will also provide our new city hall front desk assistant with as many training opportunities that are needed and available.
Thank you, Tara. Let's move on to HR, AJ.
I was worried I wouldn't be able to read this, but I can, good. So starting in 2020 and through today, HR has been tasked, along with our business partners, and by business partners, I'm referring to other senior leadership in the city, with positioning our workforce and our staff to ensure continuity of operations during a global pandemic with unprecedented economic uncertainty. The good news is that we were able to navigate through the unknowns and the challenges and find opportunities to create efficiencies through the creativity and the innovative nature of our staff and also our ability to leverage technology in ways we had not before. Though the pandemic continues to present challenges, some of which I'll discuss in a few moments, it also has provided an opportunity to reimagine how we do business in HR and ultimately in the city. As we approach the end of 2022, it is apparent that the new normal is not the old normal. Things have changed and many of these changes will be permanent. And that is the reality. There are four major areas that HR continues, that continues to provide challenges for HR as we move forward. One of them is recruitment. As you can see, we have challenges under there, under the labor talent shortage, which Michael mentioned. In this titling, the labor talent shortage really refers to both less, you know, there's less people in the market that are seeking jobs and then there's less people in the market seeking jobs with specialized skills. And both of those are creating some issues for us. As an example, we had a position open for nine months and received 27 applications after posting on various platforms, reworking the job description four times. And while we're ecstatic with the hire, you know, that is a challenge that we went without someone in that seat for nine months. So that puts some pressure on the department. Our extra hire positions have taken a hit in applicant flow as well. This directly affects our ability for parks and rec staff and events and facilities to provide services as they rely heavily on our extra hire personnel, which I'm sure Ashley and Nicole will talk about. There's more job competitors. Job seekers are looking for work-life balance. People want flexible schedules. And it's not just about a hybrid work schedule, but schedules that assist with some of the challenges that people are facing outside of work, like childcare. And then, of course, economic uncertainty. Another challenge for us is in retention. There's more job opportunities out there. There's competitive salary and benefits. There's economic factors and there's just plain old employee burnout. People are working at a higher level for a long stretch of time in an environment of unknowns. And the COVID-19 pandemic introduced new stressors to nearly every domain of life. So we've been figuring out ways to assist our employees to avoid the burnout that they're likely feeling. We're having challenges in succession planning. So attrition. Roughly about 20% or so of our workforce will be eligible to retire during the next five years. And when I say that, that means today to five years from now, about 20%. And so that's an incredible amount of institutional knowledge set to walk out the door. Talent management. As Michael said earlier, we have a newer, younger workforce. And so we need to ensure that they are developing the needed skillsets to be successful within their positions. Equitable implementation of a succession planning program. Ensuring that we're not implementing a plan that relies on one successor for the role. Knowing when to promote from within and when you need to go outside. So that creates a delicate balance, of course. Technology, we had challenges. We did not have a human resources information system. We had manual processes for personal actions. Paper-based transactions. We've now brought Munis on board, so we're working through that. And when you think of HR in its purest form, it's really rooted in transactional functions. So when you're tasked with administering HR services to a workforce that's performing work in various places, various schedules and different locations, the need to utilize technology becomes much more important than when we were able to just to walk down the hall and grab the paperwork. So next slide, please. So as we move into 2023 and winding down in 2022, we've developed some strategies to deal with the challenges. And I am a huge Queen Gambit fan, hence the chess pieces for those who watch. So under recruitment, branding, that maybe two council meetings ago or so, we showed you our recruitment engagement videos. Working to increase our digital presence. Marketing our job listings. So gone are the days where it's just sort of a dry job description. We're using visuals, we're highlighting schedule, we're highlighting benefits. We're really just thinking about marketing ourselves to the job seekers. Using hiring incentives, not only in the PD, but offering vacation and sick leave balances when people are hired. Flex schedules, you know, when we can for the positions that support those type of schedules. More in-house training options and a smoother onboarding process. We brought on hire forms. And so now new employees can complete onboard information through a portal instead of coming into a meeting for an hour and a half with a stack of paper. Retention. So our strategy is under there is classification and compensation analysis. So we're looking at our jobs and where we are compared to our job competitors. Performance management, professional development. We're using technological tools. We're trying to focus on employee well-being and policy updates. Under succession planning, we're trying to formalize retirement eligibility in the reporting analysis piece. So making that part of the budget process where we'll go in and start to look at who's eligible to retire, where are we at? And giving that information to our department director. So as they start to make their budget request, they have that information so they can do better planning for the future. The use of hire heads when we're approved to do so. Leadership development. You'll see that we have a number of staff that have worked with our communications consultant. Technical training, cross-functional training and opportunities. Great examples are, city clerk is also our chief examiner for our civil service board. So when we can, utilizing the staff we have at the city and providing them opportunities to do work in other areas. Career development training paths, a great example. Michael brought this up earlier, is in our building department. Dan Hop and Jamie Wigan, basically, we prepared them for their ability to step into the building official and the assistant building official role by career development training paths. And then, of course, internships, which is something we'll be working with events and facilities next year to form a partnership with Thailand to see if we can utilize people that have an interest in events and hospitality. I may have the degree wrong, I apologize. But utilizing those folks and providing them opportunities, internship at the city. They get the experience, we get the help. It's a great relationship. Leveraging technology. So I mentioned earlier, we have now the ability to do onboarding through a system. So we're moving away from paper forms. We brought onboard Munis. We've rolled out employee self-service. So that allows employees to access their personnel information, make changes. So we've spread out some of that work that used to be centralized between HR and finance. We're doing Zoom, 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 Zoom. DocuSign. We're working on online forms, we're using QR codes. And we're trying to, for training options, use interactive training platforms where maybe we don't have to send staff off. We can provide the training to them. There's some testing in there. It's just more interactive than just, you know, sitting people in front of a video. Next slide, please. Before I close out, I just wanted to, I talked already about training in terms of just some of the things that we've been working on. But I also wanted to highlight an area of focus for HR next year is labor relations. Our Police Guild contract is currently open. So we are in negotiations for that. Our Teamsters Collective bargaining agreement opens in 2023. So we'll begin to start that process probably in October. And then our police support staff have recently, or are in, or are in the process of forming a new union. So that will also be something that we'll be working on negotiations for next year. So lots going on in the HR department. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, AJ. It's, if you work with AJ and her crew, you are constantly astonished by the amount of work they get done. It's almost, I can't even keep up with the emails informing me of what they're doing, right? It's just really awesome. So let's go to the municipal court, our judicial branch. Judge Leon, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to give you some information about what we're doing in municipal court. As always, I start with our mission, which is to provide the fair and impartial and timely administration of justice. It's a short phrase, but there is a lot that goes into that. Obviously, protect public safety and through that effort, try to reduce recidivism. This year, the Washington State Racial Justice Consortium, which was created at the direction of the State Supreme Court Justice, delivered a report on how courts can more effectively address some of the issues related to historical disenfranchisement and inequities in the criminal justice system. So all the changes that we make are viewed through that lens. With respect to therapeutic interventions, you know that we have our DUI court, which is now in its, I believe it's its fifth year. Is that right? Fifth, yeah. And we are seeing some fantastic results from that. I think, but before the end of this year, we'll have two, maybe three more graduates from that program. But what I want to emphasize tonight is that therapeutic interventions without accountability are not effective. So the rehabilitation component has to carry with it the accountability piece. Throughout any therapeutic interventions that we employ through our programs or even that I may do on a case-to-case basis from the bench, are informed, and I use what are called evidence-based practices, which are practices that are the best practices that we know works. And we know it works because these practices have been studied. Not only have they been studied, but there has been a tremendous amount of data collected on the results from employing these practices. Ultimately, the goal, hopefully, is community reintegration. I understand the frustrations sometimes that the- I understand the frustrations sometimes that the public has, and that's why I want to emphasize the accountability piece. I think that there is a tendency for folks to sort of either say, we need more therapeutic interventions and less jail, and then you have the other side saying, we need more jail and fewer therapeutic interventions. And as in most cases, based on my almost 30 years in the criminal justice system, you can't have one without the other. So that's what we're trying to do with our DUI court. And it's also, we're working on some other programs too, which I can update you on as it's more fully developed. But the other thing that we really try to do is to be a model municipal court for the 21st century. And we try to do that by creating efficiencies where we can without sacrificing the quality of the administration of justice or customer service. We also do that by being responsible stewards of the city's money. In the past two years, we have been the recipient of a number of grants, and we are always looking for other opportunities and ways to fund our various programs and to provide additional services for those who need it. And I'll give you just a couple examples of that. And this also speaks to partnership. South King County has a number of municipal court judges. We share a lot of individuals who have cases, active criminal cases, in each of our courts. So it makes sense for us to try to leverage our collective resources in partnership with each other where we can. There is a state statute that actually authorizes courts to partner in this way. One example is the partnership we have with Federal Way where we share peer navigators. The peer navigators assist clients in both of our cases and assist them with housing, applying for benefits, trying to connect them with treatment. And that program has been, I think, really helpful to those who have availed themselves of it. So that's one example. Another example is the DUI court, obviously, that took a tremendous amount of work to bring all the stakeholders together and try to come to some joint agreement about how to proceed on that. And we're constantly looking for new and better ways to improve upon what we've already done. And to that end, we sent our team to the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, their annual national convention, and they brought back a lot more ideas and a lot more information based on the studies and the resources that are available through that Let's see. We also, the city council just approved the inter-local probation agreement. That leverages resources by allowing one court to refer supervision of a defendant that may be in this court to another court. So if, and that leverages resources because if an individual, a justice-involved individual has cases in two different courts, they are more likely to be successful. We know if they're only reporting to one supervisor, I'm sorry, support services individual. So there is negotiation between the support services officers about who may be appropriate, and the court always has the authority to say, no, I really want this particular individual to be supervised here in our court. But it is an example of how we can partner. And by partnering with other South King County courts, the fact of the matter is that a lot of justice-involved individuals travel between and among all the cities. And so they do live here, some are experiencing homelessness, others live here, they may live with family members, but they're moving through all of our cities. And so it just makes sense to take an approach where we are all involved in determining how best to supervise these individuals within the community. You can go to the next slide. So, you know, I've spoken at previous meetings regarding how we've leveraged technology in order to move to a virtual courtroom setting. I've spoken about the access to justice and individuals participating in their court hearing by Zoom. Many of them are on the job, and they simply step away to have their case heard, and they don't have to find childcare, drive to court, all of that. We have also used technology to increase operational efficiencies. And in this regard, we have a number of technological interventions that replace what used to be human data entry. And so it not only eliminates the need for that human entry, it also increases the accuracy of the data that's being entered. Courtroom audiovisual integration. You'll see on my next slide that one of our biggest challenges right now is that we are moving to more of a hybrid model. There are certain individuals that I do need to see in court when their case is pending or if they're on supervision and not in compliance. I need them to be physically here in court. Having said that, those who are compliant, I don't want to deny them the convenience of appearing for hearings by Zoom. So that means we move towards a hybrid model. And ironically, I think, it is going to be much more complicated to move to a hybrid model than it was to move from an all-in-person model to a all-virtual model. So we are parsing out the different elements of that. And one of the things that we are going to be hopefully using the ARPA funds allocated to the court for are movable, well, cubicle, it's a, they're kind of like movable consulting rooms, basically. And that allows for attorneys to have private consultation with a Zoom client who may be here in the courtroom. And then we're also hearing individuals who are here in person to have their case heard. So this is a way we are trying to think outside the box, and I think that it will work. And, you know, a lot of it is just, let's try and see if it works. And I think this is a good solution, and we've reached out to the company, and they've only worked with one other court who's done the same thing. But I think that this isn't going to be something that a lot of courts are going to be moving towards as we contemplate a hybrid model. We have been the recipient of a number of grant funds for technology and upgrades, and also for programming and training. As I said, we don't just rely on what's been allocated in our budget. We're always trying to look for outside money to help subsidize our initiatives. You can go to the next. So in terms of training and education, Jennifer and I put a real emphasis on all of our, to the extent possible, our entire staff having adequate training and continuing education. All of our court clerks are cross-trained, and what that means is, over a period of time, every single court clerk will work in every different position and assume all the responsibilities that each court clerk has, if that makes sense. So at the end of the day, whatever position you're working in, you know how the position you just came from works. And if need be, you could go back and do that position. If I have a court clerk who's working in the lobby and a court clerk who's inside the court, they can switch places if they need to because they've both been trained, even though they're very different positions. Let's see, we have our support services department. That was the biggest shift during our reorganization, was moving towards a model where we try to connect individuals with services that will help them to hopefully reduce recidivism and reintegrate with the community. And we've had great success. We have folks who are coming in and meeting with either Ms. Patrick or Mr. Maria. Mr. Maria speaks Spanish, and so he's able to meet and consult with Spanish-speaking individuals, which has been very helpful. So that, moving to that model, number one, it satisfies or it supports, I should say, the goals that were laid out in the report by the Racial Justice Consortium. And number two, you know, you do see more positive outcomes. So the, yes, and I talked about the training with the National Association of Drug Court Professionals. So I would say in my tenure here at the court, the last two years and really the last six months forward have been the most challenging, the most difficult, in some ways, the most rewarding. But we are still, we have a lot of work to do, and it's going to take time, it's going to take money. And in the meantime, we have to conduct court as we always do on a day-to-day basis. So I am looking forward to having people back, especially the attorneys, back in court and being able to return to some sense of normalcy while keeping all the positive aspects that we were able to develop over the course of the last two years. And I will leave it at that. And what are any questions? Oh, we're not doing questions right now, sorry. But I just want to say that I really have an outstanding staff, and I stand up here and talk about everything that we do, and I couldn't do it without them. I do have one more slide, I forgot about that. I don't want to go over my time. I talked about the transition to hybrid court. That's going to be an ongoing challenge, and I don't anticipate that we will have that fully up and running for a couple of months because it does require additional audiovisual equipment and the use of these sort of movable offices. There have been some changes in court rules that may increase staffing needs because there are certain notices that need to be sent out as a result of these new rules that we didn't have to send out before. So we're looking closely at that. With respect to the Blake reimbursement, as I think Jennifer, at the last meeting, briefed you on that, I guess the thing that I wanted to emphasize about that is that it is statutorily mandated that these funds be reimbursed. So the issue is not, does the city have the money to do this? Because the money is there, the legislature authorized it. The issue is the administration and the facilitation, you know, how does that occur? How do individuals who've had their convictions vacated, how do they seek reimbursement? And on the city's end, how do we process that reimbursement? So that's the piece that has been very, very tricky, and I know Jennifer has been in countless meetings trying to, with her fellow court executive officers, figure this out because the legislature didn't give anybody, at least at our court level, any guidance. So another challenge, lack of remote capability with outside jails. SCORE has been wonderful in terms of accommodating Zoom. They also have been wonderful in accommodating transporting individuals from King County Jail to SCORE Jail so that we can hear cases by video. The problem has been on the King County Jail side because they are understaffed, and we have asked for individuals to be transported, and they are not being transported, and they are also not being held on our warrants. They're released, even though there may be a warrant out for an individual that has a case in our court. So that's been a source of frustration. We don't have the ability to do remote court hearings at King County Jail, and that just continues to be a challenge. We are outgrowing our current office space for staff. We've increased our staff size as a result of our court reorganization. So that has been an issue. We're really trying hard, again, to be, do whatever we need to do to make it work. But we're hoping to have conversations in the future about that, about what we might do to increase that office space. And we're certainly open to portables or creating some other space that we may be able to expand into. The private consulting room and Zoom space for attorneys, I've discussed that. That's why we want to get these portable offices because that will accommodate that and help us prop up that hybrid court. So these are just the highlights in terms of challenges. There's always lots of challenges that we have, but I feel like we have been meeting those challenges pretty adeptly, I would say. And I have to also say that that is in part because we've had the cooperation of the city attorney's office and our public defender, Stuart McNichols-Harmel. We all have very different roles within the justice system, but it's a three-legged stool. And so if we don't have some cooperation on some of these types of issues, then things can fall apart pretty quickly. So I appreciate the attorneys that appear in my court. I wanted to go back quickly, and I did want to highlight because it really is impressive that we have two clerks who have completed, this goes back to the training issue, two clerks that have completed their court manager certification and also court executive certification, and they did that through the National Center for State Courts. Those are rigorous and challenging programs, and this also dovetails with succession planning because they've had this training. I would also note that 80% of the cost of those certifications were paid for by grants. We also have Ms. Patrick, who has both of those certifications, and she is also, right now, she was accepted into a very competitive program for the Institute for Court Managers Fellowship Program. And that was paid for through a scholarship. So I feel like our staff is some of the best trained, at least compared to some of the other municipal courts that are around here. And I appreciate the fact that when we do have to use city funds for that, which we do, and we've allocated for that, that the city council's always been very supportive of that. And our efforts in trying to find outside money too, that hopefully shows our good faith and that we do understand that money is not unlimited. So that's just a little bit of what's going on at the court, and I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you, Judge. Without question, we have an outstanding municipal court, and I always like to say that it's better you appear before us than we appear before you. So with that, we'll move on to our legal department and Tim George, our city attorney.
I'm going to do this from quarantine over here. So I was just starting to say that legal is a support department. Our primary task is assisting other city departments to be successful. And this requires that our attorney staff be available and accessible to city employees when needed. We've always had an open-door policy, but that changed when City Hall closed and people started working remotely. So within weeks of the initial shutdown, our attorneys had remote offices, and we had audio/video capabilities. But since then, we have brought everything that we do online. We've gotten rid of paper. Attorneys love faxing, that's something that we still do. And so we got rid of our fax machine, and we set up an e-fax system through the IT department so we can do that remotely. All of our criminal prosecution and court hearings are done remotely. We've recently got some new software systems that allow us to do that better. The Serview system, as well as caselines, allows us to do all the prosecution legwork and preparation work remotely and effectively. So moving forward, our emphasis will continue to be accessibility to staff and availability as a support department. This will include continued remote options as well as in-person meetings as required. And with that, I'll hand it over to the police department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Deputy Mayor, City Council, and City Manager Mathias. I'm here representing Chief Thomas. I'm Assistant Chief Patty Richards. As with the other departments, we're looking at both challenges and technology and how we're going to deal with those going into the future. Our first challenge right now is both recruitment and retention. For the last two years... For the last two years, while we've hired 13 staff, including 10 of those being officers, we've also lost 11 staff. Unfortunately, nine of those were commissioned staff. Grand total of approximately 175 years of institutional knowledge have gone out the For retention, we're looking at both wellness programs within the department. It was brought up earlier that sometimes burnout is hit, both in our staff and other city departments, and looking at ways that we can improve the wellness of our officers to keep those here and healthy, I guess would be the best word to put in at it. Also, looking at training. Training is kind of that fun thing that everybody likes to do. I know in other departments, as well as the police department, but that's kind of the carrot that we can offer to people that some departments can't do, and it's always been something that's been a pride of Des Moines PD, is we have a highly-trained group of officers, and we want to keep that up. We're also looking at different ways of doing recruiting. We have joined a South King County organization group, brought together of all the different police departments, and leveraging our recruiting with other departments in the hopes of, somebody might not work out for Kent for one reason or another, but they might be perfect for what we're looking for. And sharing that information between departments and looking at ways that we can get those officers or those people who want to be officers, which unfortunately are a lot fewer than it used to be. I remember when I tested the first time, there were 1,500 people testing for one position. Now, you've, you're lucky if you have 50 for one position, maybe even 15. And so, getting those people that want to be police officers and getting them in the right department at the right time. Training is a big thing, like I said, for officers. As we come out of COVID, the era of Zoom training, while it was great, while it lasted, is not necessarily productive for everything we do. It's hard to drive a car via Zoom. Firearms training and those type of things just don't work real well in Zoom, and we're getting those back up and running. We are making up for classes that were canceled due to COVID and also, frankly, because of staffing situations and challenges that we've had. While we met the minimum requirement for training, for us, that's 24 hours yearly for commissioned staff, many of those extras, which included both the leadership and supervision classes that we've talked about or are looking at in the future, were some of the things that were reduced, and we're going to pick those things back up and get officers, sergeants and others into those training. The other thing we're implementing is to bring back more in-house training, sending officers to training to become train-the-trainers, so not only for us to train, but also open up to outside agencies, smaller agencies, our neighbors to the west, such as Normandy Park, where we can train them at the same time we're training our staff and leveraging on a more regional basis. Succession train, or succession planning is going to be a challenge. Right now, potential staff departures over the next five to seven years include six out of the 10 staff members that are at the rank of sergeant or above. Depending on who leaves or who is eligible, that could be even higher. But right now, targeted, if you talk to the staff right now, six out of the 10 people who hold the rank of sergeant or above right now are planning on leaving in the next five to seven years. What we're doing for that is recognizing the talent that we have and the people who show interest in wanting to become leaders within the department, both now and in the future, and starting on the idea of getting them trained now. Somebody sitting in my office with me, watching what I do, and to use everybody's favorite Seahawks and Mariners, stepping up with the next man or next person-up mentality. If I choose to go out and win the lottery tomorrow and retire, who is going to step up and follow in behind me? That's a big challenge. Next slide, please. Intelligence-led policing is really getting officers where they need to be to make the biggest impact, but also recognizing that there are quality-of-life issues affecting the rest of the city and also complaints. Recognizing areas like Redondo and those type of things, but also recognizing the shootings and other things and other quality-of-life issues that are affecting the rest of the city. One way of doing that through the intelligence-led policing is our partnership with the federal task forces. Having task force officers, either part-time or full-time, deployed to these task forces really ultimately is making us better. We're getting trained officers coming back to us, but they're also a force multiplier. We've had a number of situations up on PAC Highway where we're able to bring our federal partners to task and currently are working with them, where there might be 50 Des Moines' police officers total in our dreams, but they can leverage 100 or 150 federal officers to come assist us in one way or another. And on that given day when we're making arrests, our parking lot is completely full, and it's amazing to see how many people will show up to help us when we ask. As previously discussed, succession planning is one of our big challenges and one of the things that we want to do. Leadership development is a key component of that. One thing that has recently started in the last month and a half or so is the National Command and Staff College, which is through WASPIC, is one of the leaders in that. It's 187 hours of training done completely online. It's the equivalent of six college credits. For those of you that know how much work goes into a single college credit, you'll understand that this is a challenge for everybody. Everybody at the rank of sergeant and above has been required to start participating in this training. In addition to that, somewhere close to 75% of the rest of the department has chose to participate in this training. It is web-based, it's on-demand, and everybody who's going through it says it is both pertinent and challenging, and one way that we're leveraging that idea of using online training. In addition, we want to leverage technology to do things smarter. Use of cameras is one way of doing that, the flock cameras, the updated cameras, both in the Marina and down in Redondo. And generally, looking at technology as it comes forward, who would have thought, five years ago, some of the things that we're doing today? And being on the forefront and looking at ways that we can do things smarter, and looking at what else is out there, and not being afraid to try something different. If it works, great. If it doesn't, recognizing that and moving on to the next thing. Next up will be Assistant Chief Kuei.
So, council, mayor, city manager, just to wrap up the general police portion before we have our code enforcement officer come up. Our overarching goal, as some of the citizens alluded to, obviously, is safety of the community. Our mission statement, for those of you that don't know, is, is as follows. With the sanctity of human life is our priority. We are committed to relentlessly fighting crime with trust and care. And, you know, obviously, we want to be a highly-regarded police department. That is our vision. As Patty mentioned, our training hours, we don't want to just meet the minimum 24 hours, which Criminal Justice Training Commission outlines, but we want to exceed that and far exceed that. Dovetails with our goal next year to receive re-accreditation. We've been accredited for eight years. Accreditation is in a lot of professions, obviously, and for our profession, it's, its certification is operating under the best industry standards. For us, it's almost 150 standards. There's a lot of work that goes into this. And lastly, the officer wellness, which dovetails with workforce retention. Not only do we have staff participating in the Castlight Health, which is, a lot of that is online tracking, but the legislature provided funds for police officer-specific wellness programs, which are coming this year. So, I, I think that as you develop the budget for the coming year, these are all of our overarching goals. We have a lot of specific goals, and we'll leave those for another time. So, we'll pass the baton to code enforcement, Officer Baderman.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Corey Baderman, and I'm the face of code enforcement in the city of Des Moines. And I say the face because, as Michael talked about earlier, the reality is, code enforcement is shared across most of the departments within the city. We, we share the workload, and a little bit of history to kind of help explain why that is. In addition to the codes are covered by all departments is, in, prior to 2017, we had a code enforcement officer position that was under community development, and that position was eliminated and those duties were assumed by community service officers at the police department, and then other departments took on a little bit of that workload as well. And so that brings us to today of, of me and being your code enforcement officer. So, a little bit about our program is that we're primarily complaint-based, and the range of complaints is very wide. It's a pretty big brush when we're talking code enforcement. So, this is, you know, complaints about houses and neighbors and things like that. There's definitely times where we, we proactively go after stuff, and it's primarily life safety. If we see something, then we act on it. But in general, code enforcement is a, is a primarily complaint-based, and the reality is, the reason for that is because there's just too much to do. I would never get down a street if I stopped for every code violation, because there's always something to do. Our, our code allows for enforcement, there's kind of three tracks you can take. There's civil infraction, which is a ticket. There's a civil violation, which is an administrative action that is heard through a hearing examiner and then kind of lays the groundwork for additional court proceedings to move forward on it. Or there's a criminal realm, and we can file criminal charges. Our philosophy, though, in code enforcement is that we just want compliance with the ordinance, we don't want to prosecute people for crimes. And so, I work really hard to do that, and the reality is, a good portion of people that I come in contact with, we get voluntary compliance. So, when we receive a complaint, there's a vetting process. Is this an actual code violation? Is it in the city of Des Moines, Washington, and not Iowa? And, you know, we, a lot of people try, and I don't think it's intentional, but we get drug into ongoing neighbor disputes, we get drug into landlord-tenant law things, which is governed under a whole nother section of law. And so, once we figure out that it's an actual code violation, it's something that we, we can act on, and sometimes that takes driving out to a house or a property to look at it, then we'll start our process, which is typically getting in touch with the property owner or tenant, and educating about the ordinance and seeing how we can resolve it as quick as possible. And like I said, a good, a good portion of that works. If we come up with a plan and they keep me in the loop and they, they keep progressing, then there's no enforcement action, and I move on to the, the other things that are waiting for me. If that doesn't work, then we move forward with the next step, which is a notice-of- violation letter, which gives them a deadline and kind of lays out kind of what's going to happen next. And if that doesn't work, well, then we take enforcement action, and it's one of those three things that we talked about. And they kind of go in, in that order. Typically, we'll start out with just a ticket, and if that doesn't work, move forward to a civil violation, and then up to that. Next slide. So, as with everything in life, there's challenges, and so we experience challenges. I'm a part of the police department, and so I'm a part of the police department resources, and so although my primary focus is code enforcement, the reality is, 100% of my time is not spent on code enforcement every day, just depending on what's going on. Pacific Highway safety emphasis this year has been a priority for us, and I have been an integral part of that, which means being proactive on the highway, not waiting for somebody to report graffiti or somebody setting up a tent somewhere. And so that's taken a lot of time. Time will be the theme with the rest of these, because we've, we've got backlog. I said we resolve a lot of code enforcement cases just with compliance, you know, or verbal compliance, sorry, that's not what I'm trying to say, voluntary compliance. But the rest of them are super complex and take a long time, and it might not be what meets the eye. You've got long grass and some garbage the neighbor calls about, but the reality is, it's a mental health issue, and writing them tickets is not going to solve the problem. And so we have to work through that. And then it gets even more complex when we're talking about building issues where they need to get plans, structural, you know, documents, that's an involved process. And same with land use or critical areas-type things, that can take years sometimes. And so, over the past five years, we have started stacking up with all these cases because more keep coming, but they're super complex to keep funneling through the system. And so that's kind of what we're experiencing now. Notices of violations and notices and orders are complex legal documents, that it takes time to craft, and we have to make sure they're right, because as we move forward in the legal process, we need to make sure we did our job right. And so, again, that just takes time. And the last part of documentation, that's a challenge for us, is I'm out driving around, and as I see something, I'll take a picture of graffiti and send it to the Walgreens manager and say, please take care of that, and that's resolved, and then they get on it. And then I take a picture of some stuff on the side of the road that's been dumped by somebody and send it to Public Works, and they're on it. And then I get back to the office, and I have 10 things that I've done, but I've not documented anywhere. And so, I needed an accountant for that, and that just takes administrative time. And so that is a big challenge for us, is just the time to deal with all this stuff. So, I appreciate the support, and I'll keep working hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. And, and thank you also, Patty and Mark, for, our police department does a phenomenal job balancing many, many requirements, all the way from enforcement to sensitivity, dealing with our community, and Corey does a great job at, at code, and Patty's doing a great job with the operational piece of PD, and we really appreciate that. We're going to move on to community development. Have Denise Lathrop, our community development director.
Good evening, mayor and council, Denise Lathrop. Tonight, I want to walk you through some of the challenges, changes, and priorities for community development. Our department has remained nimble and responsive to COVID-19 challenges. At the onset of the pandemic, we quickly transitioned to electronic plan review and adapted our processes and public interface within the confines of the COVID protocols. So, our, our electronic plan review was initially scheduled for about a six-month rollout at the start of the year, and we shut down, I think it was March 15th, and within about a month, we were up and running for electronic plan review. And that was really helpful, because at that time, there was a little bit of a slowdown in permitting and that, because people were all in lockdown and that, but it really helped us to continue seamlessly working on and reviewing projects remotely. Then, we also, it resulted in a lot of cost savings for applicants, because before, when we were in paper copy, many of our applications required six or eight copies of plan sets, and that could be really expensive. Then, in July, we recently reopened to the public three days a week, and this schedule has worked out really well for us, because it has allowed us to accommodate flex and alternate work schedules while providing continuity of service to the public. It also allows some days for uninterrupted plan and permit review by staff. We are in the process of transitioning City Hall reception to Suite D, and so that will entail some upcoming design and construction logistics that we will need to navigate through in the coming months. As both Michael and AJ mentioned, we had some recent retirements in our department, so we had a big gap in institutional knowledge that went away. And so, a key priority for our department was succession planning, training, and professional development. In our building department, we have, as they had mentioned, Dan Hopp, we- we have provided some incentive-driven advancement plans for staff. And part of that is aimed at retaining staff. So they're challenged and, and they have professional growth um, throughout their career at this city. Um, Planning and Development Services is working on a similar model for our, for that department as well. We are close to fully staffed. We have 11 full-time employees in our department, seven within the building division. That also includes our permit techs that's provide service for both planning and development services as well as building. And then we have four in planning. And so we have sort of the full range of staffing levels, which is great for long-term planning and growth through the department so that when people do retire, there's staff that are prepared to take on those new roles and positions. We have a robust work plan for the 2023 and beyond. Um, we are providing ongoing support for Marina redevelopment. Eric Lane's position is, um, a portion of his position is helping with COVID relief as well as economic development initiatives at the city. So that's an example of where we have a lot of crossover. Um, we have the Des Moines Creek Business Park is getting ready to, um, redevelop or to develop their western property. Um, so that's going to be a new project that will come in for master planning and permitting. We're hoping to wrap up some of the commercial projects that are under construction. We have two environmental impact statements that we will be working on. The Zenith Properties one is underway. And then the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, EIS, is in our work program for the beginning of next year. We also have two fairly significant long-range planning efforts. Those are both funded by, um, or supported by funding from the Washington Department of Commerce. So those were non-competitive grants that are awarded to cities and counties throughout the state. So we had a hundred thousand for our housing action plan, which is underway. And we recently received an award letter for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That will help us with our periodic review and update to the comprehensive plan. So we're currently working on the scope of work for that project. And then we still have to submit a grant application to get the funding. Um, we have ongoing code maintenance and updates that we do. We have day-to-day customer service and permitting. As Corey mentioned, we are, we have a pretty big backlog of code enforcement items. And some of those do really take a long time. There's three properties I'm working on that I started in 2018. And we're trying to wrap those up. Um, and then we are all, always looking at ongoing improvements to efficiencies and how we run our department and streamline permitting and development review processes. Thanks.
Thanks Denise. One thing about our, uh,
Just good job. Good job getting money. I like that.
So one thing that's really impressive about what you just heard, um, is that, you know, we had not only the changeover in the building officials. Susan also left. And so we had a reorientation of leadership in community development. And Denise and everyone involved in community development has done a seamless job of proceeding with the level of quality that we're used to. So we really appreciate that. Andrew, um, Public Works.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Uh, good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Andrew Murgis, the Public Works Director, and I'm excited to talk about Public Works with you guys for a little bit here. Overall, uh, from a staffing perspective, uh, we've got 12 engineering services staff, technical and licensed engineers, and about 23 operations and maintenance staff. Now, what I'd like to note about that is right now we've got seven full-time vacancies out of that. So I'll talk about that a little more in the next slide. But what does Public Works do? Public Works maintains and operates the physical assets of the city. We've got over a hundred miles of roadways, uh, multiple bridges to manage signs, signals, sidewalks, landscaping, irrigation, multiple parks, multiple facilities, over a couple hundred miles of storm drainage, uh, ponds, outfalls, treatment facilities, uh, flow control facilities, creeks, streams, and over 200 vehicles and pieces of equipment in, in our asset inventory. So a lot to take care of. And on top of that, we also work on snow plowing, street cleaning, and everything else that you'd expect from a public right-of-way and a public space perspective. Uh, so a lot going on from an operations and maintenance perspective. Uh, a lot of engineering services, we implement the city's capital improvement programs. A lot of the capital projects that we talk about throughout the year, uh, kind of crosses over from transportation, stormwater, facilities, uh, Marina projects. We help in all of those, uh, investments and priorities that council sets for us. We also help with development review services and work closely with Denise's group to review and approve privately-built public infrastructure. So any, anytime a building builds a sidewalk, has a entrance or a driveway onto a public roadway, we also look at that. And then very importantly, we also, uh, take part in emergency management and response. And one of the big events that Public Works responded to, on the second picture on the bottom from the left there, is that Woodmont landslide that occurred. And couldn't be more proud of Public Works stepping up and really helping out, trying to solve that, that challenging problem. Next slide, please. Uh, so challenges that we've got, the biggest one like Michael stated and all the other, uh, departments have stated is labor shortages, uh, continuing economic pressure. So it's local, it's regional, it's national, it's global right now. Right now, we've got a 30% reduced Public Works and Operations Maintenance workforce. Uh, so we're trying the best with the staff we've got to kind of keep up with baseline services. Uh, with, as far as applications coming in to fulfill those roles, we've seen about a 70% reduction in applications for all of our open positions. So that's been pretty tough. Uh, we also have a vacancy at the professional engineering level. That's been harder to fill than, than I would have anticipated. Over time, I think the next couple of years, we've got retirements like everybody's going to see in their departments. Uh, they're continuing to accelerate. So a lot of institutional knowledge, uh, walking out the door and enjoying retirement, enjoying the, the next phase in their, their lives. Uh, we've got a much younger workforce coming into Public Works and that's going to require a lot more training needs. Uh, and that'll be also in the next slide when I talk about that a little bit. We all are also seeing a lot of material and equipment inflation pressures as well as availability pressures. So wholesale and market pressures, gasoline, equipment, parts, uh, wood, for example, get, it's, it's been expensive. It's getting more expensive. So everything we do, we're trying to do more with less. Uh, there's global supply chain issues. So when things break down or we can't get, uh, supplies, it just hinders the work that we can do in a timely manner. Next slide. So objectives coming up in, in 23 and even right now. So human resources is very important to us, given the, the reduction in our staff and capability right now. We're collaborating with the whole HR team to be the employer of choice in Public Works. We're trying to implement innovative strategies for recruitment and retention, uh, especially for the crew that, that has a hard job to do. Uh, staff training is, is highly important, uh, as mentioned among all the other departments so far. Uh, right now we do something that's pretty unique. We do CDL training in-house. A lot of folks that drive our big equipment and, uh, our big trucks like for snow plowing, a lot of those folks get training in-house. A lot of other cities have to hire that out. And like the rest of the world, all those other trainers, uh, don't have capacity to actually license CDL drivers. So we're trying to maintain that through time as we probably see a retirement with the trainer that we've got in-house. We're going to try to pass that knowledge on and pass the training capability on. Uh, we're also looking at sending a lot of folks to heavy civil industry events and classes focused on really, how can we be better, safer? How can we do our job more efficiently, uh, and just be very safe about it? And we're also seeking cross-agency opportunities across other agencies or neighboring agencies to kind of collaborate on how they're doing their work as well. Another really big important strategy is looking at optimization of operations, embracing efficiency and effectiveness and ensuring increased safety with the crews. With a reduced staff, you can imagine with the pressures on trying to keep up with all the physical infrastructure and assets, uh, it's just a lot more demanding physically and mentally on the guys out in the field. So I want to make sure that as pressures keep building with, with the lack of staff, that everybody stays safe out there in the field. Uh, we want to look at implementing state-of-the-art equipment, making things more efficient, more effective. We also want to look at implementing IT methods and data analytics to drive decisions. You know, how do we manage our fleet, for instance? How, can we do it better than we're doing today to try to take the workload off of the folks who are actually maintaining all of our assets in the fleet? And another big priority is encouraging staff at all levels to lead recommendations. So if someone out in the field has a recommendation on how they can do their job better, uh, the whole Public Works Department is going to encourage that and try to facilitate that, uh, and try to, uh, be better and safer with the work that we do. And just for a quick example, that little red machine up there in the, the left picture is a new machine we just bought. A little lawnmower, as we call it out there. Uh, it's all remote robotic. So if you see one of our workers out there standing on the side with a little remote-controlled joystick, they're actually operating a, a machine that can mow our ponds at about half the time that it usually takes us to do, as well as it keeps the crew off of those steep slopes and in hazardous conditions. So that's one of the ways we're kind of innovating and, and taking on new technology to help with the work we do. Next slide, please. Uh, one project I want to highlight, the North Marina Bulkhead Project. And I appreciate the public for their older patience. I know it's been a long time and we're almost done. I promise. We're about 80% there and I anticipate that by late October, early November, the public will be able to use the facility, uh, barring any other issues with concrete. But in general, it's looking, looking really good. We'll complete that coming up here. So we've got the entire bulkhead facility has been replaced. Uh, we're working on the restroom out there right now. You can go see it being constructed. We replaced the breakwater. And we're also putting in a lot of non-motorized public spaces out there. So a lot of the sidewalk you saw before, before this project is going to be a lot more wide, a lot more expansive to allow the public and pedestrians to utilize kind of the frontage of the bulkhead for views and just recreational enjoyment. Uh, and the last note on it, out of the total project cost of 3.7 million, the state legislator, or the state legislative, uh, bodies, uh, championed by Senator Karen Kaiser, helped fund about almost 30% of the total cost of the entire project. So really, really proud and glad we've got good legislative advocacy and support to get that work done. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you. I, I think everyone can, everyone can appreciate, you know, this whole succession planning. Andrew's been the Public Works Director for a relatively short time. And I think his command of his department and what's involved and, um, you know, the culture that supports the answers coming up from the people actually doing the work, um, are all extremely positive. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. Let's move on to the Marina.
Uh, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Scott Wilkins, Harbor Master at the Des Moines Marina. Uh, if you don't mind, we're going to change it up just a little bit tonight. So I'm pleased to introduce our Assistant Harbor Master, Katie Bevegney, who's going to give our presentation.
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Council. Thank you. Um, go for it. Thank you. So like a lot of the other departments, um, the, uh, one of our biggest concerns and biggest risks, challenges right now is the succession planning. We have, um, a couple of employees that are nearing retirement. And like all other departments, we lose that institutional knowledge along with it. One of the things that we really need to work on more is the continuing training, um, of these employees to the new ones. Our, our Marina is over 50 years old. So the maintenance portion of it is super critical to the Marina. So hiring, retaining the individuals that have the skillsets that we need in order for the Marina to be functional. For example, plumbing, electrical, welding, that kind of skillset is highly needed. Um, we really need employees because we often work weekends. Um, all of my staff pretty much work weekends. We work all the holidays, especially during the seasonal or the summer times. And then we have occasional night work as well. Some of the increased programming, i.e. community events, the ferry operations, has definitely, um, put a little bit of a toll on our current staff. We're, we're limited staff right now. Um, that also the increase in just recreational boating. When COVID hit, everybody bought a boat. So we're, it's, it's great. We're filled. I mean, our Marina is about 90% occupied right now. And it has been for almost a year, which has been unheard of in my history to be there year-round. But it's, it's a lot more than what is normal. And so our limited staff just are getting a little bit burnt out for some of them. And the overtime is a cost to the city, but it's fun and we enjoy what we do. Uh, we want to remain, um, we want to keep our lines of communication open with these employees just to guarantee their health and wellbeing. We want to make sure that all of their needs and concerns are met. Next slide. So we are separated out into really two kind of departments for the Marina. We have our certain service and maintenance crew, which consists of about six employees. Uh, we are down one and we will be hiring that replacement, um, here shortly. And then our office staff, including the Harbor Master, is about four employees. So we're about a 10-person department running our Marina. A lot of the, um, operations do cross over between the two departments. It's a, it's a necessary, um, job for both. For example, policy enforcement, we really have to work together on that, especially when it comes to derelict boats and things like that. Um, our service crew is really responsible for the majority of the dock repair and the maintenance, um, the landscaping that's on site. They do all of our launching and hauling services, um, and the janitorial on site. While the office deals primarily with the customer aspect and all of the billing and policy enforcement. And we do more with the capital improvements and budgeting. Okay. Some of the, sorry, some of the functions, um, that the Marina has been dealing with is that the boating, as I mentioned earlier, activities have noticeably increased since the beginning of the COVID pan- pandemic. All of these people, when you can't go on planes, you bought a boat and you stayed local and you were on the water because that was what was fun to do. That has also increased our waiting list timeframes. As mentioned, we're about 90% above, or we're 90% occupied or above year-round. During the summer, we're a hundred percent. Before COVID, during the wintertime, we would range between 65 and 70% occupied. So being at 90% in the wintertime was, was, uh, was a big jump. This activity is, has not slowed down. Our termination rate has also dropped. Usually we have a lot of terminations turned in this time of year. And while we do get some, there's a lot of people that are sticking around year-round just to be guaranteed the boat space. For the future, um, our capital improvement projects, most of, uh, which you guys are all pretty aware of and have been even spoken about tonight, we have our dock replacement project. Uh, we're in the very early stages of Phase One, which is our LMNN dock replacement project. That project is supposed to start almost exactly two years from, from this month, uh, in 2024. We're actively working on getting the tenant restrooms in the south lot replaced. Um, in, in, um, building and the process for putting in an all-purpose and dry stack building to replace our dry stack storage, our dry storage sheds that we have right now that are severely deteriorating. Um, our Redondo Pier and the Redondo Rest- Restroom Replacement Project, which is, um, actively being worked on. As Andrew mentioned earlier, the North Bulkhead and the new restrooms in the, um, north lot, those, it's going to be beautiful out there. And then another capital improvement project is going to be the Marina Steps, which we're all looking forward to. So that's pretty much the Marina. Short and sweet.
Katie, thank you. It's, once again, you can see the demands on the, um, operations um, have not been met with the equal increase in staff. And so they've been asked to do more. And we appreciate how well they've done that. N- now also like to have, um, Dan Brewer talk about our Marina redevelopment process.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, as you've heard this evening a number of times already, economic pressures are, uh, a significant concern for our city. And that, uh, also affects many of our capital improvement projects. Uh, you heard from Andrew a little bit ago, the work on the, uh, North Bulkhead Project is drawing to a close. And we're looking forward to having that, uh, complete. And as Katie mentioned, we're currently in the design phase of our dock replacement of LMNN docks. Um, and looking forward to having that capital investment, uh, complete here soon. As you know, we've been working on, uh, the landside redevelopment for quite some time. Uh, this is an effort that, uh, the city's been undertaking for over, over a decade. This is an effort that the city's been undertaking for over a decade now in a number of different ways and attempts. Just some history there, we've had a number of community meetings over the last couple of years, and as we were getting ready to start our RFQ process and working with the developer, COVID hit. And so we had some delays in starting our development interaction process with the development community, but that's underway at this point. We started that process late last year and have been in exclusive negotiation agreements with the developer for developing the landside of the marina. Couple of things that have happened recently which have caught us a little bit by surprise. We've been tremendously surprised at how well the ferry service has been doing and how that's really put us on the map in a number of different ways. Advertising, people really interested in what's going on with the ferry service. That's heightened and shined the spotlight on what's going on in Des Moines and elevated the marina in very positive ways. One of the things that we knew was integral to private investment in the marina was public investment in infrastructure. So we've been working to, working on that over the last several years. We changed the entrance of the beach park by removing the old house that was there, and it really changed the dynamic of the public waterfront and interface with the sound. Soundview Park is complete. If you haven't been there, you need to go check out the deck and the views from the park. Phenomenal. The North Bulkhead Investments and Improvements, those are things that are currently underway or complete. We're already working on planning efforts for the Two Twenty Third Street improvements. And other improvements that we're going to be making on the marina are the South Bulkhead that extends down across to Anthony's and extending the promenade down there, up, creating utilities structures in there. And then, as Katie mentioned, we're working on adaptive purpose building and future phases of dock replacements. So we knew that all of the public investment would leverage private investment. What we didn't really realize was to the extent of which the value of the public investment is having on the potential for private investment in the marina. And so as we've been working with the development community and our consultant teams, we've really, really have been taking a look at highest and best use and how we can integrate uses at the marina. And so that's something we've been talking through. I'm excited to announce, and the community will see this in the upcoming issue of the City Currents, we're going to have a community meeting on September twenty-seventh. This will be at the Senior Activity Center where we provide an update specifically on marina redevelopment and where things are at and moving into the future. So mark your calendars for that, and we'll have more to share at that meeting.
Dan, thank you. I think it's extraordinary to look at the projects that Andrew described and that Dan described, and to remember that we're small. We're doing a lot, and it's amazing the quality of what's going on. So let's move to events and facility rentals. Ashley, come up.
Hello, and thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Ashley Young. I am the Event and Facility Rentals Manager for the City of Des Moines, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present today. The Event Facilities Department is responsible for managing public and private events that occur in several city-owned and operated facilities, operating under the guidance of the marina. In addition, we are the reviewing department for special event permits. We work closely with the Seattle South Side Regional Tourism Authority and assistant organizing community events for the City of Des Moines. We have the pleasure of working with several different departments and programs within the city, including Parks and Rec and the Arts Commission and Senior Services, and we also work closely with various organizations in Des Moines who organize their own community events on our properties, mainly at the Beach Park Event Center, which you see here. And this is the same slide, hon. The Beach Park is a public park and event space hosting three indoor facilities, one outdoor shelter, and two green spaces. It's a twenty-acre park valley with six hundred and thirty feet of saltwater beachfront, sitting directly on the Puget Sound north of the Des Moines Marina. A former home to the Covenant Beach Bible Camp, the property was sold to the City of Des Moines in nineteen eighty-six, and in two thousand and six was placed on the National Register of Historic Places. In addition to the Beach Park, we also manage public and private event rentals in the Field House, the Activity Center, and Booton Park at Redondo. Here you will see a list of several event types that we see on our properties. As you can see, we manage venue spaces for several types of events, ranging from social events such as weddings and celebrations of life, to nonprofit and community events like Waterland Weekend, the Summer Concert Series, and Ailey Camp. In addition, we manage the use of the marina floor and food trucks, the floating pavilion, and the guest mortgage for incoming yacht clubs and group bookings. On this slide, you can see the number of contracts we have held by these event types and the revenue received for the last four years. These are individual contracts and not the actual events themselves. Oftentimes, many of these contracts will have several events that occur within their contract. There was a significant increase in rentals in two thousand and twenty-two compared to the previous three years. The pent-up demand from COVID opened the floodgates for those who had to postpone or delay their original dates. However, we may expect to see a decline in two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four. Our department saw significant challenges and a decline in revenue during COVID. State and county mandates created inconsistent operations with ever-changing capacity requirements and time-forced venue closures. Event organizers and staff had to navigate through last-minute changes and scattered organization. This created demand on staffing, last-minute needs, and cost of goods. With several sectors, as with several sectors, staff retention has been at an all-time low. There is no one set reason why this has occurred, but several, including health and safety concerns, new opportunities found in other industries during closures, and inconsistent scheduling. Organizing special events has been especially challenging for any event organizer. The demand for safety and equity alongside the shortage in finances, staffing and volunteers, and vendors has made the planning process rigorous. Attendance numbers often fluctuate, making accuracy in planning uncertain. Even with all of these challenges, I'm happy to say that the Beach Park was able to open back in August of two thousand and twenty, with the guidance of our Emergency Management Director and our legal team and the executive staff. Strictly following all state and county mandates, and our department is looking to the future to provide dependable, full-time positions to strengthen our team. Now to look to the future. Our department is currently looking to hire a coordinator assistant. This was an extra higher position that was extended to a full-time position. We're also working with Highland College and their Hospitality and Tourism Management Department, otherwise known as HOST, to create paid internships and career pathways. We're fortunate to work closely with the Human Resources Department to create these opportunities, and we attend job fairs alongside of them. We're looking to enhance and streamline rental operations with our department with new customer relation management software. We are in the process of going fully digital, and a program or software that is specific to event needs will allow us to fully do that and create better customer service and operational organization. It is important for us to preserve the facilities at the Beach Park, and we're looking for opportunities to repair and restore the Founder's Lodge back to good health. We are also looking to find dedicated office space or create dedicated office space for our growing department. Research for new ways to process special event permits would allow for an equitable and transparent way of approving permit applications. An update of the city's website to provide clear information could also assist event organizers to better hold public and community events in Des Moines. Food trucks or mobile food vendors are a popular way to generate foot traffic and drive attention to other brick-and-mortars in Des Moines. A review of our current code could allow these vendors to operate more openly. Our department has been working, or been working for several years to have regularly occurring mobile food vendors at the marina, the Beach Park, and Redondo. Adding an intern to assist with these programs could drive that demand, assist other departments with their food vendor needs, and create new and exciting events to attract tourism in our area. Our department has worked with the staff and community development and finance to learn and understand the current code and to brainstorm ideas on how to effectively move forward. We've all seen the beautiful work done at Soundview Park. With the opening of this new space, our department has received several inquiries on how to rent the platform. Since it's not yet approved for rental through our department, we have in turn received several special event permit applications for use of the space, which is a significantly more demanding process since it has to go departmentally to get approved. It would be our recommendation that we add the platform at Soundview Park to our list of rentable shelter spaces to provide a better streamlined way for community members to use it. And the Arts Commission. I'm happy to say that with the dedication of staff and the remaining commissioners that the Des Moines Arts Commission did not miss a single beat through COVID. Even at the peak of COVID, meetings occurred each month virtually with creative and innovative ways to support artists in our region, holding virtual and in-person events since October of two thousand and twenty and installing several public art pieces throughout Des Moines. Even with the decline in event staff and active volunteers, the Arts Commission will hold all of their annual events in two thousand and twenty, including Summer Concert Series, Theater in the Park, and our upcoming Squidorama in November. As a way to continue to support cultural events in Des Moines, grant opportunities will be offered for organizations applying to new events or programs through the Arts Commission. And in addition, the Commission will look to better partner with other departments and organizations such as Human Services to support their events. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ashley. You know, one of the privileges that I have is to be able to observe the level of dedication of our staff, and there is nobody more dedicated to success than Ashley. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Good evening. Nicole Nordholm, Director of Parks Recreation and Senior Services for the city. And mine will hopefully be brief. Like everyone has touched on, the pandemic combined with loss of staff, both long time as well as layoffs that have occurred earlier on, have led us to where we are today with our department. So our priorities remain to provide quality recreational programming, parks to enjoy, and a sense of community for our city. The safety of our staff, as well as the children and seniors partaking in our activities is critical. So with all of this in mind, we are bringing back classes and programming with the staffing capacity that we have. This summer lived up to its Camp Chaos name. It was truly chaotic, but wonderful to be back running our summer camp here in the city. We were able to hold various sports camps through Skyhawks, as well as our Rave Foundation Partnership. We introduced a Lego STEM camp I had mentioned before, and were able to host two movies in the park. We brought back youth soccer this past spring and are gearing up for fall soccer, which the first games are this next Saturday, the seventeenth. We're also thrilled that youth basketball will be returning in January. So for solutions to a lot of our challenges, moving forward, we really, like a lot of folks have said, are needing to focus on the value of training and a sense of togetherness for our staff and our department. Establishing skillsets needed to work with challenging individuals, with families and with youth, and with our school districts and various partners are all areas that need continued dedication and focus. We and I are very lucky that we have motivated individuals within our small department that are already putting in this work and are committed to assisting others to accomplish that. Establishing trust, empowering our staff, and celebrating the accomplishments we've been able to do truly instills a sense of loyalty to both the Parks Department and the city as a whole. So what we want to accomplish and plan to accomplish, we have much on the horizon that we plan to introduce this coming fall. We have different and unique programming coming up, a lot of teen-focused activities, and a lot will be both in the City Currents and more information to follow on our social media. We currently have four full-time positions, full-time staff in Parks and Rec, and then two up at the Activity Center, and we're actively hiring another full-time park staff and then two positions at the Senior Center. We actually interviewed a lot of pretty solid candidates today for the Assistant Recreation Manager position for Parks and Rec, so that was exciting. Community involvement. So we've increased our work with our community garden stewards, as well as our partnership with Forterra to hold cleanups in our parks, gardening education, and different conservation events. We welcome this engagement and did even recently hear of a need for garden stewardship at Cecil Powell, and so we have plans in place to meet with that community member and that in the neighborhood and survey and outline the scope of work for that park to bring more stewardship there. Also, in response to our recently updated Parks Master Plan, we are working on upgrading play equipment in parks, adding new features, and continuing to improve our parks. We've been fortunate in providing our in-house camp and sports leagues I mentioned and our after-care program up at the Field House. However, we actively connect with area agencies such as, you know, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and private sector programs, and don't plan on competing with those. We partner with them and view them as complementary to our program offerings and what we are able to continue to provide to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. As, once again, outstanding, the work that you're doing. So now move on to Finance Department. This is where the rubber meets the road.
Good evening, Council. Beth Ann Rowe, your Finance Director. Some of, well, as everybody stated, the challenges that we've had. During two thousand and twenty-one, we actually took on replacing our financial and human resource management system, which we've referred to as Munus. We're really happy to say that we went live on January first, two thousand and twenty-two with our financial system. However, we realized that the undertaking of running and implementation of the financial system as well as the HR payroll, they don't recommend doing them consecutively, but we did it anyway because our tools were, both programs, well, the program we used for payroll processing was from the early nineties, and the one from the financial management system was developed in the late eighties. So we pushed to have that done. We're still implementing some of the modules. We are rolling out electronic timekeeping. HR is working vigilantly, getting open enrollment for the benefits up and running. We're looking at implementing contracts and encumbrance accounting. One of the things is, is that we have implemented project accounting and activity tracking, which we're seeing efficiencies from being able to track salaries and benefits that people around the city are doing towards the projects, capital improvement projects that Public Works do, as well as departments that are putting their efforts in on special projects. So we're really pleased, and it is, we are getting efficiencies from that, so we're very happy with that. We are working on succession planning. Like you said, in the next couple of years, the Finance Director and the IT Manager have a future retirement in the Works. At this time, I'd like to really commend our IT department, because when you start thinking of everything that the city has done and all the various departments have done, we have a very small IT staff. They do not like to, you know, take kudos, but they're very dedicated, they're very committed. I mean, the Police Department has a twenty-four-seven operation, and with our small staff, they've been able to manage that. They're integral in making sure that all these technology advances, that they're there to help. Our systems are up and running. Most of the time, we very rarely have our systems go down. So I really want to commend our IT staff. They're very grateful. I really want to commend our IT staff. They're very great professionals. And so as we do the succession planning, we'll provide training for staff. One of the things that Finance has taken on is the business license system and BNO tax, Business and Occupation Tax System. Currently, we're developing the system of record and that's to record the detailed businesses, their license and the tax reporting. We need to collaborate with community development and also code enforcement on the licensing. We're working to improve the functionality between that system of record and File Local. Because we went File Local, we thought that it would operate in a different manner and we've had some stumbling blocks and frustrations to our business owners, but we're trying to improve that experience as we move forward. So that's our Finance Department. Next slide. This is where we get into the numbers. This is our general fund five-year forecast. And we have a policy that we developed where our fund balance, a minimum ending fund balance needs to be 16.67% based upon the Government Finance Officers Association recommended best practice to make sure that you have enough in reserves to be, to operate. Now, because of some of the things in, in 2022, we actually, or actually in 2021, we ended with a, a quite a larger fund balance. So at the beginning of 2022, we have 7.16 million. And in that, we're in, we're estimating we're ending with like a 27% fund balance at the end of 2022. That's gonna help us with our challenges in 2023 with the cost of living increases and some of the changes that we've programmed. But in doing that, as you look out for the next four years, at the bottom, we've been able to maintain our 16.67% fund balance to show that we are sustainable into the future. Next slide. So our next steps, the budget calendar is on October 6th, City Manager will present the recommended 2023 annual budget. October 27th, we'll have the first reading of the 2023 annual budget. And then on November 10th, we'll have the second reading of the 2023 annual budget. And in those meetings, we'll also present resolution for property taxes and we also will present the ordinance for revised 2022 budget. I believe that concludes my presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much. So the numbers that you saw show some of the preliminary consideration as to what will constitute the 2023 recommended budget. Beth Ann's done a great job with that. Really appreciate, appreciate her efforts. And we'll be back to Council with all the specifics of everything we've discussed today will all be transferred into literally a financial budget for 2023 that Council will review. They can change and hopefully adopt at some point. I just want to say, and, and also to make the point again, the reason the fund balance, the fact that it's strong allows us to continue to operate, you know, at the level that, you know, addressing COVID and discrepancies and changes in revenue generation and all of that, we've been able to survive that because we have a strong fund balance and we've had disciplined use of the money. And we make sure that our structural expenditures come as close as possible to matching structural revenue. You can see for a few years, we're spending more than we bring in, but because of fund balance, we can retain our solvency. So I really appreciate that. My last comment tonight, before Mayor, you get into questions. I remember several years ago in a conversation with Congressman Adam Smith and Mayor Matt Pena prior to Mayor Mahoney, the Congressman said, in his view, Des Moines was clearly a well-run city. That speaks to the fact we have an outstanding, capable, dedicated staff that made the financial results you have seen possible. It's a result that safeguards public trust and public resources. I think you can see from the presentations tonight how seriously everybody involved in the city and our team take their responsibilities and I couldn't be prouder of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias. I really appreciate all the staff's time on what I consider a great, frank, honest presentation about the challenges and the accomplishments and what lays ahead in the future. With that, we're gonna be going to questions. What I'm gonna ask Council to do is, I'm gonna go around the room. I'll start with you, Councilmember Nutting, and work to Councilmember Harris and I'll go last. But I'm asking that, we all probably have multiple questions. My, my request is ask three, four, or five, turn the table. I'm sure a lot of our questions might be the same, but I want to give everybody an opportunity to have a couple rounds of questions. And with that, the only other request I have is, in partnership with the City Manager, the request is that the questions be asked to the City Manager and then he'll work with the appropriate staff. So with that being said, I open the floor to Councilmember Nutting for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I make a recommendation that after sitting here for two hours plus, that we take a 10-minute recess?
Let's, let's, I only, we have a motion for that, obviously, second. Do I see consensus? Okay, so it looks like it's a seven-zero without anything. We'll, we will begin again. Let's say, let's just make it even, 7:30. Does that sound acceptable to everybody?
I get these texts from people and they save it and they're just, I'm trying to give you our time. It's just that they save it.